Thank you for joining us this evening in regular scheduled council meeting in the Park City City Council, April 24, 2018 at 7:00 PM. Danielle, what you call the role?
John Linner.
Here.
George Glover.
Here.
Ben Salsetta.
Here.
Melvin Kerr.
Here.
Tom Jones.
Here.
George Capps.
Here.
Brandy Bailey.
Here.
Jim Schrader.
Here.
The quorum is present, Your Honor.
Thank you. Tonight Pastor Ron Rhodes is going to lead an invocation and Jack Whitson is going to lead the pledge for us. Just very big please stand.
Our Father, we, we can't help but be thankful that we still live in the greatest country in the world, but also Father that we live in this wonderful city in this great state. Lord, I lift up the men and the woman on this council. I pray that you give them wisdom and I pray that you protect them as they serve us here. Lord, I lift up our police department. We have a relatively real safe city to live in because of them and they risk their lives for us and oftentimes they don't receive the appreciation from the community that they should, but we thank you for them. We ask you to protect them and to protect their families. Lord, we thank you for everything. We ask that you give these council people wisdom in making decisions for the people of this city. We thank you for these people that serve us and we ask these things in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated. The first item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. George?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
And Jim, I second that. We have a motion and a second, not seeing any discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes eight and zero. We don't have anything for awards and presentations this evening? Rick? Is there anything for? Okay, we don't have anybody signed up for public forum this evening, so we'll move on to staff reports and we'll start with Rick Norman, our Director of Public Works. Rick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Public Works report for this evening, April 24, 2018. First of all, in our department, March 22 Bruce and Councilmember Kerr attended the USA Awards Ceremony in Lawrence, Kansas. We've now been in that about 19 years and we'd like to say thank you to Councilmember Kerr for going up there with Bruce. I did get the irrigation lines turned on at the baseball fields. We did have an issue with some graffiti in Jardine Park. Someone had got into the basketball court with spray paint. We couldn't clean it up with a regular cleaner, so we had to have that sand blasted off in the street department. In preparation for our mowing season, we've trimmed back some trees on Broadway so we can get our mowers underneath there. Also on 69th Street, we have two entrances where people were coming in and dumping and digging, so we blocked those entrances. We put posts and cable up to stop that. We did also complete mowing on the medians on 61st Street. That's our first mow rotation for the summer season. In the water and sewer department, the average work orders per day was 22.
Rick, Dennis, you have a problem with the main lift station too that you had to deal with this week?
Yes, we did. We had an issue with our variable speed drive. We looked into that and it was an electrical conduit going from the lift station to the pump station. Worst-case scenario would have been having to rerun about 200 feet of electrical cable. We isolated that down and minimized that in half. So we did get, it was on an emergency basis. We do need to have those pumps operating all the time. So we did mitigate that and got the wire run put in and that part of that's resolved for now.
I just wanted you to opportunity to share that because a lot of times we go through the typical day-to-day grind that you and your people, you know, take care of daily, but then there's these crisis events that happen that people need to know that you're working after hours and late during the week and weekends to cover those and I want to make sure that we discuss that as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Along those same lines, last Thursday, we had a critical issue with our 53rd Street lift station. Essentially, the suction pipe broke on that. We were pretty, it was an emergency situation and we were a little nervous about that. We got that switched over and we're currently using one pump. We have our contractor coming out in the morning to reinstall a suction pipe on that. That was a pretty close call. We went into the evening to get that resolved, but we expect to have that second pump back in by the end of day tomorrow, but thank you, sir.
All right. George, did you saw the comment?
Yeah, I just want to, the trim and branch day, that was canceled, I understand?
Yes, sir.
When is it being rescheduled for our viewers?
Dana's going to cover that.
Thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else have any questions for Rick? Not seeing any. Thank you, Rick. Appreciate it. Next, we'll hear from Chief Boston.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. I just wanted to give you a few updates on some things that are going on in the police department. Just in general, the last couple of weeks, we've seen an uptick in activity here in town, a variety of calls and so forth. We normally see this in the summer. It seems like it's a little bit early this year. You know, whether that trend continues or not, I don't know, but hopefully it's not a trend that's starting early and continues through the summer. The first thing I wanted to talk about is the records management system that we purchased. We've been in the process of getting that up and running. It's a pretty big project and it really affects everyone on the police department. We had the training, which was two full days of training. Everyone, except for a couple of people, made it through the training. Those were duplicate days, eight-hour days of training. And then on the third day, we had training for the administrators of the system. We are already using the system, but we're officially going to go live with it next week. But right now, the officers are already using it, so for all intents and purposes, we're already putting it into use. We've already seen some benefit from this. You know, I don't remember if you recall, but this system shares data with 100 and some agencies around the state that have the same records management system. So if they've had contact with an individual or a vehicle and we're looking for that person or we're trying to associate that with a name or whatever, we can search the system. Now, we can't look at their reports, but it tells us where to go to get that information. We've had opportunities to use that already, so that's, I think it's proven to be a really useful tool. The next thing I wanted to talk about is our social media and recruiting. KSN came out here a week or so ago and did a story about the video. If you look on our website, it's posted on there and also on our police department Facebook page, but it's gotten a lot of attention and I think that it seems to have paid off in terms of recruiting. It's a little bit early to know. The reporter asked me that question, you know, has it been worthwhile? We don't know yet, but it certainly got a lot of attention and I think the more attention, the more we can get the word out that we are looking actively for applicants, I think the larger the pool we have, you know, the more that's going to benefit us. But it, the story itself was very positive and there's a link to the story if you haven't seen it, if you're interested. It's on the police department Facebook page. The third thing I wanted to talk about is the Purple Wave Auction. The council approved for us to sell, excuse me, several used vehicles and also some surplus used equipment that we no longer use. I wanted to bring back to you the results of that. I think it was very, very successful. In fact, this time really beyond our expectations. You can see the price that these vehicles brought and the number of miles that were on them. We had a couple of them that were, they sent a truck down from, or up from Florida to pick them up, but the total amount of revenue was $20,630 and then that goes into the police department capital equipment fund. That's money that will be used for future upfitting of our patrol vehicles and that's money I don't have to come back and ask you for. So I think that, you know, there's a number of officers in the department that were involved in the sale and they did a great job and I think it's been very successful. In the past, you know, we're talking a number of years ago, we would just take cars down to the auction and there wasn't a lot of effort really put into it because it didn't seem to, I think the idea was we wouldn't get that much out of them and we found by putting them through Purple Wave, we've been really successful with that. So wanted to update you on that. The last thing I want to talk about is the staff report. Not a lot new to report there, but just to let you know where we're at, we have one new officer that we hired. April 30th, he'll go to the academy. We've got one that's at the academy right now, a little over halfway through, graduates June 1st if he's successful and that's looking good. One officer who's in the field and he's finishing up his field training and should be on his own here pretty soon. We have two open positions right now for police officers and we just hired a code enforcement officer and she just started today. It was her first day, so hopefully she'll be making the rounds here. You'll get a chance to meet her, not in the line of work, but you know, just socially hopefully, but if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Chief, I knew you had a slide in there on the outfitting of the new patrol vehicles.
Oh, yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This time we used a professional company to do the upfitting, what they call upfitting or putting all the emergency vehicle equipment in our vehicles. And in the past, we've used individuals and, you know, we've had some good success there, but frankly, it's getting more and more technical and so this last time, well, I'll just give you an example. The last two vehicles we bought, we got a vehicle in roughly June of last year. We just finished getting it outfitted about less than a month ago. That's how long it took us because it got stuck in the process of the outfitter that we had, some difficulties there and then trying to transfer that over to someone else and have them finish it and so forth. The last vehicle that we purchased, we got it in, we had it done in a very short period of time. In the future, if, you know, we'll always go out for bid for, or quotes rather, for police vehicles, but if we continue to use the same dealership on the state contract, they tend to stock vehicles and keep them on hand, so the company that we work with actually works with them and we'll deliver the vehicle so they can pick up the vehicle, upfit it and deliver it to us within one to two weeks. So, and of course, that's if all, if everything goes like it did this last time. So overall, it's been very successful. Gets the vehicle on the road a lot quicker, a lot less downtime for us.
Okay. Looks like we have a couple of questions. Ben?
Yes, Chief, I had two things actually. One, I want to say thank you to your staff for the great use of social media and also getting the attention there of our local media covering how exciting it is to work for the Park City Police Department. So thank you all for all that you do there. One question I had, you said that there was an uptick or you've seen an uptick a little earlier on calls. Could you maybe talk a little bit about what type we're dealing with here or?
Well, you know, typically, I think when people think of summer crime going up, they tend to think of kids, you know, being out of school and not having something to do. And, you know, we do see that. I won't say that's not true, but it's an overall increase in calls. I mean, anything from domestic to theft to juvenile issues and nothing really out of the ordinary, although there's always something different, you know, it seems like, but no real trend that I can point to.
Okay. Ben, Ken?
Yes, sir.
All right, Jim?
I just had a comment. I watched the video on social media and I enjoyed that. Thought that was pretty neat to see our officers talking and talking about Park City, so well done on that.
Thank you and I appreciate the work that Jesse Wallander did, putting the video together for us. He really did a great job. We kind of wanted to give people, among other things, a sense of who some of our officers were. You know, you can read a description of a department, but when you kind of get some video like that of someone talking gives you a little better sense of who you might be working with, but thank you for that. I appreciate it.
All right. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from our human resource manager, Dana Walman. Dana?
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and as Councilman Glover had mentioned, the brushing limb day was canceled because of rain, so we're very, very thankful for the rain and I guess we can look at this as being thankful that we have extra time to go out and do yard work now that the weather is getting nicer. It has been rescheduled for Saturday, May 19th, so people can put that on their calendars and they can get out and do some additional work and if they're out in their yards or they're cleaning their property, which we would encourage people always to do. There are still 112 coupons that are available for the transfer station as well. And remember that if you're wanting a coupon, call the city and we'll get those to you. I did want to give an update on Recycle Bank. I know that we've talked in the past, if you're not familiar with Recycle Bank, this is the program where you can receive rewards for recycling. There have been some questions in the past as far as what kind of rewards they were and if they were things that were good for us locally and there's going to be a change in that program. Positive thing to that is that it's going to focus on local rewards, including local businesses. If they would like to be a participant in the program, they can contact and they can be approved to be, you know, giving some rewards out and that would be a positive thing. The thing for people to remember is that this program is going to change on June 4th. It's going to go from Recycle Bank to Recycle Perks. People will have existing points that they may have and they need to use all of those points by June 4th because they will not carry over. So that is a very important piece to it, to encourage people to go on and to sign up and participate. They can do that either online or they can call and if they do that by May the 30th, Waste Connections will enter people's names into a contest to win an iPad. So that's an encouragement. We're going to be giving that information out as how you can sign up. That will be on our website. We'll use our social media and also Waste Connections will tag all of the recycle carts in town to make sure that the information has gone out to people who are currently recycling. If you don't have a recycle cart, we would also encourage people to call the city and we'll get that recycle cart out to you. We won't waste connections, well. So we really encourage people to recycle. So I would be happy to answer any questions that people have.
Dana, I know we want to make sure people know how to sign up for the new one, but can we also just kind of re-hit where people can go to look at their current points that they may have?
Yeah, we'll put some information out for that.
Okay. Tom?
I have one thing. Waste Management went out and worked some coupon deals with a lot of companies around Sedgwick County, or several, and went to a barcode system so you can use a smartphone and a barcode without discussing it with the people that were honoring the coupons. So if you show up at some of the places that are being advertised, if you don't take a paper copy of that coupon, they can't honor it because they don't have any way of barcoding it. So they did something without discussing it with the people that they were working with, size up in Sedgwick's one place that can't honor it unless you take a paper copy with you, so you might want to pass that back to them. They made, I'm sure they're aware of it now, but there's a coupon available, you can go get it off your points, but unless you get a paper copy and take it with you, they won't honor it. They can't honor it.
And I can't say specifically, but I do know that each coupon is different and there should be information online when you're going to redeem that coupon.
Okay. I'm just passing it on. You're better off to take a paper copy if you have a way of making one, so.
Okay. Brandy?
Dana, when we approved the contract here, it was a few months ago, it had been brought to their attention that maybe along the walking path, there'd be some recycled bins there so people can put their trash in there instead of on the ground. With the weather getting nicer, has that, have they looked more into that or has that been brought back up?
That would be, the city needs to do that. That would be not be part of the current contract and my answer to that is no, we have not done that, but that will be on our list to do.
Okay, because I thought the vendor had said that is something that they could do, so I just wanted to, I just wanted to check. Okay, thanks.
John?
With the Recycle Bank, I notice there are some municipalities that have, where you can utilize some of the rewards for like a utility bills and stuff like that. Would that be a possibility of something we can get onto Recycle Bank before everybody loses all their points? Because I, go ahead.
There's such a short time window that I don't think we could do, we could do anything with Recycle Bank. I think right now, it's just use those points that you have in the existing system how it is. And I know I've gotten on and I've noticed over the last few months, because I don't get on that much, but I think that the number of vendors has shrunk considerably than it was before and I know that's always been one of the concerns with this program. Once again, it's supposed to be local and I think we're just going to have to see how it works. The point system, I'm sorry I didn't say this, but the point system is different as well. The way that you will accumulate points is that for each time that your recycle cart is dumped, you get 50 points, so that would be a maximum of 100 points per month. If it goes to the curb and it doesn't matter what, how much is in it, if there is recycle in your cart, it's on the curb, you get 50 points.
And it doesn't go up or down from that?
Uh-uh. It's just 50 points per time.
Can we check and see if maybe this new company that's doing it is something that we could maybe add in municipal, like our utility bills or something?
Well, absolutely, we could. I'll get in touch with Herschel and I'll ask those questions because I have no knowledge of that at this point, but we sure can look at that.
Thank you.
And also your request. I'll make notes of those.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Don't have any more questions. Thank you, Dana.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Is there a motion? Jim?
I move that we approve the consent agenda.
And George?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes eight and zero. That brings us to new business, item A, which is considered an ordinance amending Section 14202 and repealing Section 14208 of the Municipal Code related to speed limits in school zones. Doug or Chief, which one you want to?
I'll go ahead and start. Mayor and Council, this is an ordinance in front of you today to solve a little bit of a problem that we had with the two school zones that we have in the city. One of those along 61st Street is the, I guess, the more typical kind that has the flashing lights and indicates that the school zone is in effect. The one on Independence nearer the school is not like that and it talks about it being a school zone during certain hours. That's caused a problem because of the change in school times, start times and close times over the years and so the chief asked me to try to clean this up and what you have in front of you, and it's subsection J of Section 202 that's been changed and I hope you can see it. If it's not in red on your copy, it should be on your computer, but it's the lighter-colored language that starts after the sentence that begins "at all times" and after the word "activated," it now reads, "Or when a school child or children are occupying a marked crosswalk, are waiting at the curb or on the shoulder of the street and are about to cross the street by way of the marked crosswalk, or are present or walking along the street either on the adjacent sidewalk or in the absence of sidewalks on the shoulder within the posted school speed zone." And then the limit is determined then to be 20 miles per hour. So what this does is it does away with times and we'll have new signage on the independent school zone, which will just talk about this being a school zone when children are present. Things will remain the same on 61st Street, but now that will also, if for some reason the school, school lights are not flashing on 61st Street, but children are present and are crossing in the crosswalk, that would also make that school zone subject to a 20 miles per hour speed limit. And then finally, Section 14208, a couple of years ago, we amended 202 to try to clean up our speed limits and we changed speed limits on hydraulic and cleaned up the language a little bit and that's when subsection J became what it was before we just, before I changed it in this ordinance. But we also had sort of a duplicate school zone provision at 14208 and I'm sorry, I did not put that in here and strike through it so you could see it, but it just restates that school zones are independent street from 61st North to Forester and then along 61st Street with that same description and it talks about times again and it's just, it's superfluous and it's confusing and so it needs to be gone and then we'll have the subsection J, which will control our two school zones. So I would recommend that you adopt the ordinance amending 202 subsection J and repealing 14-208.
Chief, did you want to add anything?
I think there's maybe been a little bit of miscommunication in the wording, so, and I apologize. I haven't had the opportunity or I have not read this until right now. So because of that, I think the issue I can see is where on 61st Street we have lights and the thought behind this was, well, first of all, what brought this up is that the school district has changed the times for school at least twice this school session and they're going to change it again in the fall and they've been very good about letting us know what those times are, but because it's always changing, if it's posted on a sign, we have to change the sign. If we post, if we put it in the ordinance itself, then we have to change the ordinance. So the notion was that on 61st Street where we have the lights, that if the lights are flashing, then the speed limit would be in effect and that there wouldn't be anything in the ordinance that would specifically say times. And then on Independence, that we would change the signs and take down the times that were listed and put when children are present. You know, you see that in other jurisdictions. I think the issue here might be that because the wording "or" then 61st Street's going to be, if someone's driving through there and there are children walking on the sidewalk, technically it would be a 20 mile an hour speed limit if I understand correctly. So my concern would be, is that what we want to do? We want it to always be when children are present as opposed to when the lights are flashing, so.
Doug, do you think we need to haunt this and rework it or?
I can make, let me suggest a change that I can make and so let's start reading it "at all times." at all times. At all times that the traffic signal system alerting drivers to the presence of a school speed zone is activated on 61st Street.
Okay.
Or when, I'm sorry, or on Independence Street when a school child or children, et cetera, et cetera. That would solve the problem.
Chief, could?
I agree with that. And I want to take responsibility because I didn't read this before the meeting, so I'm not putting any blame on Doug.
Okay. Does council understand what Doug and the chief are recommending, other than what we have in the packet? Okay, then we'll move to George.
Well, I know we have the free lunch program in the summertime over at Chisholm Trail, so in effect, this is, this is going to be in effect here around. Is that correct? Those school, there are school kids, and they're walking up to the school to get their free lunch. And this applies to them too, right?
Well, if we made the change that Doug just recommended, then that would remove it along 61st Street, but it would be in effect on Independence. Because it would only, 61st Street would only be active when the lights were active.
Well, in the summertime, there's quite a few, there's quite a few children go over there for the free meals. I believe it's anyone up to the age of 18, but there's a lot of children use that.
But I think if we wanted to, it might be a separate issue, but that maybe we have those lights activated during that timeframe during the summer. That would make that, that would put that in place if we decided during the summer hours from that lunchtime, whatever timeframe that might be that we put out there, that that would activate the school zone at that point. But we would, that would be a separate issue. We'd have to come back and talk about that again.
Okay.
Is that correct, Chief?
Right, I think that would just be an in-house, like administrative decision that we make when we have the lights on. My feeling is, I don't know how the council feels, but with this, the school lunch, you know, there are schoolchildren, it doesn't matter what time of year it is, the whole idea is for their safety, and the signs would say when children are present. And I guess, isn't that what we want, you know?
Right.
People slow down when children are present, so that's my thoughts on it.
And it'd just be going back and reprogramming the lights to reflect that during those summer times. Okay. Very good, George.
Yeah, thank you.
Tom?
My concern is, is there's always kids down around that school, so theoretically, you might as well have a 20 mile an hour speed limit. People, when they drive in, it says if kids are present, speed limit's 20. You don't know whether the school zone is in effect or not, so you have to slow down.
Well, the wording is school, child or children. And again, this is a little contrary to the conversation we just had about the special program in the summer, but you know, at seven o'clock at night, children in the area are not going to trigger a school zone because school's not in session. During the summer, children in the area are not going to trigger that being a school zone because school's not in session, they can't be schoolchildren.
But from six in the morning to six at night during the wintertime, when school's in session, that could be a school zone.
Well, schools, schools.
I don't know when they open up, but there's an opportunity for kids to go to school at six in the morning if they're in basketball practice or something like that. I don't know, you know? It's, it just expands it and.
Well, it only affects Independence, so if the council would want to make that more restrictive, then I would say we would need to pony up and buy lights and put on that.
Work with the school district and get something down there or something. I don't know, I just don't know how you would enforce it. I know there's a sign similar to that down on 9th Street Murdoch area down around KU Medical Center, and you never see kids there. But I went through there the other day and there was one little boy walking, I don't know if he was going to school or what. So that school zone was in effect, that's the only time I've ever seen it in effect. But at Chisholm Trail, it's just the opposite, there's kids always on that street, so kind of look at it being in reverse.
Well, the language is directly from what Wichita does.
Okay, I understand.
So I think what we have to look at is we have, both our city attorney and the chief have a recommendation that this would help make them, where they can enforce the school zone with this language they're providing us.
I just think there's a lot of subjectivity there that's going to have to be worked out, and I don't know how you do that, so.
Okay. Ben?
And I would just ask one, and I agree with Tom on there, just as far as the questioning portion of it. Obviously, we want to make sure that our children are safe and anyone present in that area. But I think Doug, you kind of explained it pretty well there, so this would apply any time that school is in session only. So then it does kind of become.
Well, you know, I'll give it to you that a child's a child, and so, you know, it's an elementary school, so if you, if, you know, you can make judgments, if you've got 18-year-olds walking along there, 16-year-olds, then they're probably not schoolchildren. I don't know how difficult, I can't address that. That's more for the chief about how difficult it is to make that judgment, but clearly, the chief and I talked, and I think the police officers are, not just ours, but probably all police officers, from time to time make judgments. There are times when those lights, let's take 61st Street, that's not a perfect example, when those lights are on and there's no school. Either it's been called off, or it's a holiday, and, and our officers don't write tickets, people go 30 miles an hour through there, so a certain amount of this is going to be discretion, so. But I do agree that if it is a problem, the probably the only solution is to make that 20 miles an hour through there. But then that, when school's not in session in the summer, that raises other issues about 20 mile an hour speed limits in our city, which I've heard from this bench before, that we don't like. Because people speed, and then that creates problems. So this is about as, this is about as good as we can do unless, well, I'm really free associating here, speaking for Public Works and for the money that you spend, I mean, the other solution is to change the lights there and make them flashing. I guess that's, if you don't like this solution, I guess you, you put the flashing lights up on Independence Street.
And I don't mean to say that I disagree with any of it there, because I do understand the principle and premises of doing this, but I could also see where you could run into issues, maybe not at this point in time, but five years down the road, 10 years down the road, you face different circumstances. But as the mayor suggested there, if it really is, does become an issue, then we could look at maybe adjusting, or putting up lights at some point down the future. I'm not opposed to it, I just wanted clarification, just for the purpose of knowing. Thank you.
Okay. Ben?
Sure, I go, go ahead then, based on that, and make a motion that we approve the ordinance amending section 14-202 and repealing section 14-208 of the municipal code related to speed limits in school zones.
And that would also include the recommendations that Doug gave verbally within that ordinance?
Correct, include that specific for 61st Street.
John, did you want a second for discussion?
Yes, second.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second. Not seen any further discussion. Daniella, would you call the roll?
John Leonard?
Aye.
George Glover?
Aye.
Ben Salzada?
Aye.
Melvin Kerr?
Aye.
Tom Jones?
Aye.
George Capps?
Aye.
Brandy Bailey?
Aye.
Jim Schrader?
Aye.
And that ordinance passes eight zero?
That is ordinance 1043-2018.
Thank you. That brings us to item B, which is consider a resolution establishing the stormwater fees. Doug?
Mayor and council, this is in response to a motion made by the council, I think two meetings ago. We had established a couple of years ago our stormwater utility, but up till now, we'd not taken any action to establish stormwater fees. And what you have in front of you is a resolution doing that. The important provisions really are in section one, and those restate the decision and motion of the council two meetings ago to make a charge of $1 per month for, and all those zoning designations there are essentially residential, residential one, two, and three, and multi-family or multi-family housing one and two, $1 a month fee. And then number two for commercial properties, zones C1 and C2, $5 per month, and for properties zoned GC, general, commercial, and then E1 entertainment, and I1 and I2 light and heavy industrial, a charge of $10 per month. Sections two and three are in there because that's what we do with our regular utility fees, our water and sewer charges, as we have the ability to collect those directly through collection actions, but we also have the ability, when they are delinquent, to certify those to the county if we follow certain procedures. And then they are collected in the same way as taxes, special assessment taxes or liens. So I would recommend that you adopt this resolution to implement the decision that you made two meetings ago on stormwater fees.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions? Tom?
I'm going to make a motion we approve this resolution.
John?
I'll second.
And George?
My question is, maybe not a question, it's a thought, is we've really got some drainage problems in this city, and we've never been able to build a fund big enough to handle any of them. And I would hope there's some way we can tie this fund down where it's not rated for other projects, where it's just simply, so we could build a fund to handle the drainage problems we got, so that money wouldn't get sucked off to do something in the parks or something, you know?
Daniella, do you want to answer that question, because we already have that covered? Danielle?
We have created a fund, actually, this will be a stormwater utility fund, and so all monies that come from those billings on a monthly basis will be allocated to this fund, so it will be restricted monies.
Okay.
And then that fund will also be managed by the Stormwater Utility Board that we're going to, that we're going to put in place, that will make recommendations to the council, which the council will approve or disapprove.
That's good.
And in addition to the accounting side of things, which Daniella addressed, from a legal standpoint, that charter ordinance that establishes the utility, we could, you could not spend these fees, councilman, for anything but stormwater and storm sewer, it's sewers, but it's really established for stormwater, because we check, we collect our sewer fees with our water fees, but it is restricted legally under the charter ordinance also.
Okay, that's very, very serious.
All right. Yeah, George? Okay. Ben, or Tom?
I wanted to reaffirm something I brought up before when this was on the agenda, and that is residential properties that are in the commercial or the industrial areas, because that area has been rezoned since the house was built, get charged the R1 rate, and we said we would do that. So I just want to reassure and bring that back out.
Okay. Yeah. Okay, Ben?
Just so I understand, right, concerning the effective date, these would be, if this is approved here tonight, this would be included on the May 1 billing, or the May billing? Is that correct?
Daniella?
Actually, I was trying to raise my hand to discuss that. There is an implementation period where we are actually going through each property and making sure that the zoning is attached to the billing, and that's over, a little over 3,100 accounts. So as we do that, then marketing to, letting customers know that this fee is coming, so this would not happen on May 1. I was, I would hope that you would give us maybe 90 days to get this implemented, Mayor.
I was going to say, we had already talked about.
Yep, we had talked about it.
And set up that date, so you have that date with you.
It was effective the July 1 billing.
Yes.
Does that need to be included in this resolution?
No, I think that's not.
That language, councilman, in section four is the effective date of the resolution, and there's really nothing in the body of the resolution that, that demands that we start charging this immediately. So I think administratively, we can handle it the way Daniella's talked about.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Not seen any further discussion. Daniella, would you call the roll?
John Leonard? George Glover?
Aye.
Ben Salzada?
Aye.
Melvin Kerr?
Aye.
Tom Jones?
Aye.
George Capps?
Aye.
Brandy Bailey?
Aye.
Jim Schrader?
Aye.
And that resolution passes eight zero?
That is resolution 990-2018.
Thank you. That brings us to item C, which is considered, which is considered an ordinance amending sections 15-606 of the municipal code of the city of Park City, Kansas, relating to the collection of recycling program fees and repealing the original of said section 15-606. Doug?
Mayor and council, the change here is a small one, and you'll see it in subsection B. It's the deletion of that last sentence, which, as the, as the ordinance presently exists for recycling fees, no fee is charged to a unit that is vacant for a period of more than 30 days, for so long as the unit is vacant. It was in trying to talk about how we're going to implement the stormwater fee that we kind of came, became aware of, of sort of a problem. And maybe I'll let Daniella address it after I finish here real shortly, but we do have a program, it's not a vacancy issue, but it's a vacation issue, a vacation status, which a homeowner or the owner of a rental property can ask that we impose, which then causes their, their utility billing account to sort of go into a limbo. It stays there, available to them and to us when they come back, but it isn't just a matter of whether that the property is vacant for a 30 period, 30-day period. It's something that they have to affirmatively do. So instead of us worrying about what properties are vacant and so forth, the thought was that we would do away with that vacant, 30-day vacancy exemption from the recycling fee. Likewise, in the stormwater, we'll treat that the same way, and then rely on our vacation status for accounts in order to account for someplace where somebody knows that a property, if they're deployed, for example, or going to be gone for three months, they can put it on vacation mode, they won't have, they won't have the fee charged to them for the recycling, but their account will remain available to be reinstated when they come back. Maybe Daniella can correct it if I've said something that wasn't accurate.
Daniella?
The only thing I want to add is that this will, this will add the recycling back to, let's say, if there's a tenant, and the tenant moves out, the property owner will then take that recycling fee on. So there will be, that will be the biggest change, other than what Doug said.
So kind of what we had talked about was, one, house cleaning, like Doug was saying, and making sure we're aligned and doing things the same way. Where this fell through was in the rental, when a property manager had a rental that was vacant, they didn't have to pay that recycling fee, yet when we look at stormwater, we still want to collect that fee. So to make sure we're aligned, that owner of that property would also continue to pay that recycling fee even though it's vacant. And it was just a little, I think it was something that was part of the oversight of when we had the rental inspections, and we, we got to know when property owners or new tenants were coming in and doing inspections, and since we're no longer doing that, this is just going to make it that we're consistent on each level. And then to come, come back to what Doug had said, if somebody puts it in vacation mode, that would freeze both of those fees. And for that to happen, that property would have to be in vacation mode for 30 days. So if any time during that 30 days, the utilities are reactivated and it triggers a bill, then those fees will still be imposed.
Any question?
I would move that we approve the ordinance amending section 15-606 of the municipal code of the city of Park City, Kansas, relating to the collection of recycling program fees and repealing the original of said section 15-606.
Okay, and Ben?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Not seen any further discussion. Daniella, would you call the roll?
John Leonard?
Aye.
George Glover?
Aye.
Ben Salzada?
Aye.
Melvin Kerr?
Aye.
Tom Jones?
Aye.
George Capps?
Aye.
This agreement is set up so that when we bid this project, there will be a special line item for this conduit. So we're going to know what the cost of that conduit is when we bid this out. This agreement says that AT&amp;T will reimburse the city for the amount of that cost. So that's what the agreement's for, is to make sure that we get reimbursed.
And this is really a wise way to do it, that Jack's come up with, where we make this agreement in advance, so we don't go through the process of the bridge and then come back and then want to try to collect. We're going to be upfront, get this agreement done, so that we get reimbursed for it, and it's not something that we have to go down and try to chase later. Tom?
And I think it's a good thing. It's always afterthought when things like this come up. Well, let's be big enough that if AT&amp;T could share, I mean, if there's something else that needs to go through that area, or are they doing it just for their wire?
Just for their wire.
Okay, so there will be one piece of tube going through there somewhere, and it'll be theirs.
Right. Any other utility wanting to do that would have to do a similar agreement, I think.
Which means there could be some hanging off the side of it again one of these days.
Well, hopefully not.
Well, I understand, but I mean, we're trying to think ahead, but they're the only ones that have stepped up to wanting to do this.
The only one that I know of would be ourselves, if we want to strap a water line on it or sewer line or something, which I doubt that we'd want to do, since ours is out away from the bridge. Maybe the gas company would want to do that, or a gas line, but don't know.
I'm the end.
Ben?
I'm going to let him make a motion that we approve ordinance amending section. Nope, they're on the wrong screen there.
The utility agreement.
Yeah, I'm looking at the screen right in front of me. Let me get back over there then. Sorry, I was falling along on the screen. Oh, sorry, I'm getting there. There we go. That's what I'd like to make a motion to approve, the utility agreement with AT&amp;T.
Okay. George?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Not seen any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes eight zero. That brings us to item E, which is consider bids on the hillside repairs. Jack?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In your packet is a bid tabulation showing the bids that we took. We had five bidders, which I thought was excellent on that. They ranged from eighty-four to eighty-six to over two hundred and three thousand dollars. There were two bids that were within four thousand dollars of each other. That was Kansas paving and Flit Hill materials. I recommend that we select the lowest bidder. One of the things that usually the council wants to know of is where's the money coming from? It's going to be coming from Special Street and Highway. The fund currently has three hundred and thirty-three thousand, four hundred dollars in that fund currently. We project getting another hundred thousand dollars into that fund by the end of the year. So we have the money to do this. I'm afraid if we don't do this, that the road will just get irreparable, and then we'll get stuck with having to rebuild the road, which is a million dollars a mile to totally rebuild it, and we don't want to have to get into that position, so.
I don't know if any of the council went and drove down any of that, but it's in pretty bad shape. Jim?
I have driven down it. So I would move that we accept the low-cost bid for the hillside repairs.
From Kansas paving for eighty-four thousand, two eighty-six, out of the Special Street and Highway Fund?
Absolutely, yes.
All right. George?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Not seen any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
And that motion passes seven one. That brings us to item F, which is consider a proposal from Elite USA LLC Construction for purchasing a portion of the high-ridge property that the city owns. If you remember, the last council meeting, you approved the contract to look at having that replatted. I didn't sign that contract because I knew that we had somebody that was interested, and I know TJ is here to speak on that tonight, and you have that proposal in your packet. So I never signed the agreement and just kind of been sitting there waiting until we got this proposal. So TJ, if you want to go ahead and come on up and share with us your plan.
I'm sorry, don't have, bear with me. Hi, my name is TJ. I'm Elite USA Construction. We like to buy that land and start developing on it. It's a hundred seventy-two thousand, hundred seventy-two houses, basically. Our goal is to build these houses at very low cost and be affordable for everybody. And, basically, I don't want to read all that, this is too big. To build very nice homes for two hundred twenty-five, two thousand two hundred, two thousand two hundred fifty square feet, and it's going to be affordable for every person in, around this neighborhood, it's going to be affordable for a hundred ninety thousand dollars. That's what we present to the customer. And those houses, they're going to be, if you compare them with any other builders, they will be a price about two thirty-five. So we give a good quality and low price for every customer in the neighborhood with low percentage of the house. And we will donate five thousand dollars from our price, if you guys will donate incentive for like another five thousand dollars. Basically, you give your people over here a hundred eighty thousand dollar house, which is, everybody can afford it, you know, with twenty-five hundred square feet. That's our goal.
You want to touch some of the details on the cost and how you want to break that down and purchase that land?
Okay, I will, we will buy that land, we put a two hundred thousand dollar down at the front to hold the whole area, the whole ADA goes. And then after, as we start going in development, we're planning to do the northeast side, which is about thirty-six homes. Every three months, we're going to build ten houses. Every time we build a house, we pay abortion of whatever the abortion is for that land, about twenty-five?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six hundred dollars. So at the end, you will pay the whole land, and we'll give you a new customer. So it's going to benefit the whole city for taxes, schools, police, everything. That's our goal.
Okay, so there's some things council just needs to consider here. It might be nice, can you just give us a little bit of history on kind of you and your company and where you've been building, kind of some of your projects you've been doing?
Well, we are, Elite USA is a family business owned, me and my two, three sons and my wife. We started business on two thousand five, basically, and we've been successful. Our goal is to build very quality houses with very low prices. You know, we've been doing this for a long time, as I said, two thousand five. Built too many projects, and all of them very successful. Our customers very happy from us. And the last one we did, we did twenty-nine homes on Rowan State, on Webb Road. We did that in one year, twenty-nine homes. Customer bought them, they were very happy about it, you know? And right now, we're doing a new development on Samuel Edition, the same thing, it's going to be for public. And I'm working on, working with the Arc City right now to do the same concept on, for the meat market over there. We're going to build about thirty houses, affordable homes, to their customers over there.
Okay, so there's a couple of things I just want the council to consider. One, if we go down this route, we lose that park because we stay with our current plat. So council just needs to remember that. That was kind of one of the benefits going the other direction. Also, if we start this and something happens, it ruins the plan that we have in place. We can't go back. So once, if we would go down this path, we have to be committed to it till the end. It would be great to add more homes to the community, and I think another thing, the council, what we have been doing with specials and developers now, is we've only been doing small groups at a time, ten, fifteen, and we're talking about doing something thirty here, as far as, you know, putting in some of the infrastructure. We might want to ask for a higher letter of credit instead of thirty-five percent, maybe we want forty-five percent. Maybe we want to do fifty, since we're going to stick our neck out and do, put in infrastructure for thirty houses versus the small sections that we've been doing recently to keep us from getting in that path in oh eight, where if everything, so. Tom?
I was going to say, the way this is laid out and what I was looking at, starting on the east, northeast side, the property south of the easement would still be open. So he could build the whole north side and walk away, and we'd still have the south side, which is where you want to put the park, so.
That would still mean replating, but this is purchasing the land under the old plat.
But if you leave it alone and you start building houses, and at some point, he decides he wants to stop building houses, which he's not going to do, he's shaking his head, but that parkland is still there, it just hasn't been replatted.
Okay. Can I say something?
Yes.
That's the reason I present to you guys, to show how serious we are. We're not like every other builder, I don't want to talk about anybody else, but that's the reason I'm putting in two hundred thousand dollars upfront. This money, you can hold it. If I walk out, I will lose this money. But every time I build a house, I will pay for that land. So you still have the two hundred thousand dollars. Let's say we start with thirty-six homes. So I built ten houses, so you'll get twenty-six thousand dollars for these ten homes. And yes, you will develop that land, but after we're done, then we'll do the next phase.
Right.
And every time, every time I build, I pay you money. I'm not going to take money from that two hundred thousand dollars. The two hundred thousand dollars are going to stay to the end of that development. So if I walk out, I will lose that two hundred thousand dollars. Simple as that.
Right, it's basically two hundred thousand dollars of earnest money on the land.
Right, and the type of houses are you going to build? Are they going to be like similar to what you put over on Webb Road?
Yes.
Okay.
Close to that. Thirteen hundred square feet upfront and twelve thousand, twelve hundred in the front, twenty-five hundred square feet.
Okay.
And you give twenty-five hundred square feet of a house, you know, for a hundred eighty thousand dollars.
I was in your development when you were building, so I've seen what you've got over there, so.
You like it?
Yeah. I was surprised how fast it went. One year, there's thirty houses in there, so.
We have a good relation with our subs, everybody respecting us, the way we treated them and the way we work with them, from everybody, from framers, foundation people, and all that stuff. And this is our goal, because the way we, I'm a shriner, I learned this from the way I am, you know, the way you be treated, you learn in school. Everybody goes to school, some people get successful, some people don't, some people get doctors, some people not. The way I went to my school and my, you know, shrine classes and all that stuff, it teaches me a lot. And it showed me the right to use the right bath to how to deal with people, and that's why we got successful in that.
I would like to say in that area over there, I think there was six or seven basins put in before they could get the streets put in. So he was in there working before the utilities got done.
Okay, Jim?
Yeah, I like what we're talking about here. So I wanted to recap just the finance, the numbers, the dollars being spent here. So I think it was six hundred and sixty-one thousand, you put two hundred thousand down. Now, right now, we have no cost, and the city has no cost, other than some incidentals into this land that there is passed due specials. So the two hundred thousand is going to go to pay those specials.
No.
No. Cap?
I want to follow the six hundred, the purchase price.
The two hundred thousand is like earnest money, okay? He's saying he's going to buy this development, and he's giving us two hundred thousand dollars of earnest money.
I follow you, that's.
Okay, so if he doesn't do and finish this whole development out, then the two hundred thousand is ours.
No, I don't think that's what, what Jim is asking is, while this land got donated to it, it got donated to us with a heavy debt on it and drainage specials, which is why we put it in the land bank.
And we're not profiting two hundred dollars.
So we're not profiting from this, we get to clear off that debt and get reimbursed from that.
Now, that is the key question, is that the debt will go along with his purchase, so he will get that debt.
In its entirety?
Well, as he buys, each lot will carry about a three thousand eight hundred dollar special debt with it.
And then we're going to put streets on it and increase the specials again?
That's correct.
Over and above that?
Correct.
I'm going to pay for your specials, the one you have, the debt you have, that's the six hundred and, much was that, six hundred and?
Six hundred and sixty-one.
Sixty-one, ninety-seven. I'm going to pay this debt for you buying that land, basically, that's waiving your debt. That's, you know?
Okay.
And doing that, I'm doing the two hundred thousand dollars, I'm paying two hundred sixty-eight, five thousand, two hundred, two thousand, two thousand six hundred eighty-five dollars every time I put in a house on the land, okay? So that will cover your debt, and then the specials will be carried to the houses.
We don't have any debt. Well, we just got those specials.
Well, actually, it's, if I calculate it right, if you take one hundred and seventy-two and divide it into six hundred and sixty-one, it's more than the twenty-six. It's more, almost four thousand dollars per lot. So what he gives us is not going to cover the debt on the lot. It's going to be short by fifteen hundred bucks.
I don't know if I followed all that.
Okay, each lot, if you take the six hundred and sixty-one thousand divided by one hundred and seventy-two, if you're with me here, I'll do that.
Yeah, let's.
You've got to add the two hundred thousand in too.
Yeah.
The two hundred thousand is what?
Yeah, that will cover that.
But we can't touch it, though.
It's yours.
Okay, you're saying we can take that money?
Yeah.
Pay those specials off?
Yeah, that's how I read this.
Absolutely. That's what we would have to do with that.
This, okay, I'm buying the whole thing.
Right.
With six hundred.
For six hundred and sixty-one thousand, nine seventy-two, forty-seven.
I'm buying that with that brass, okay, but I'm not paying that brass completely one time.
Right.
To be able to do what I want to do, because I want to do my setup. But to show you guys my good faith, I'm going to give you two hundred thousand dollars upfront, that part of that land.
Okay.
And then, then I'm going to start, let's say, with thirty-six houses, okay? And that, you will keep minus that thirty-six, you know, the two hundred sixty-five thousand dollars, minus the balance, because my balance, it will be four hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars.
So you expect us to take the two hundred thousand, pay off the debt on the lot you're buying?
Yes.
Okay, that's why.
It clears our debt and the drainage.
I want to get that cleared, because I thought that's the way it was going to be, but he made a statement, and I thought it was kind of like.
Well, it says in the paper here, you know, we're buying two hundred fifty, we're giving you guys two hundred thousand dollars, and then the remaining balance would be four hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars.
Okay.
And then that balance will be divided for, you know, two hundred and sixty-five to two thousand six hundred.
Gets you the twenty-six eighty-five, which helps, which zeros off that.
Exactly.
Okay.
And then, and the.
Okay, you're saying we can take that money?
Yeah.
Pay those specials off?
Yeah, that's how I read this.
Absolutely. That's what we would have to do with that.
This, this, okay, I'm buying the whole thing.
Right.
With six hundred.
For six hundred sixty-one thousand nine seventy-two forty-seven.
I'm buying that with that brass. Okay, but I'm not paying that brass completely one time.
Right.
Right.
To be able to do what I wanna do, because I wanna pay myself. But to show you guys my good faith, I'm gonna give you two hundred thousand dollars upfront, that part of that land.
Okay.
And then, then I'm gonna start, let's say, with thirty-six houses, okay? And that, you will keep minus that thirty-six, you know, the two hundred sixty-five thousand dollars, minus the, the balance, because my balance, it will be four hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars.
So you expect us to take the two hundred thousand, pay off the debt on the lots you're buying?
Yes.
Okay. That's, that's why.
This, it clears our debt and the drainage.
I wanted to get that clear, because I thought that's the way it was gonna be, but he made a statement, and I thought it was kinda like.
Well, it says in the paper here, you know, we're buying two hundred fifty, we're giving guys two hundred thousand dollars, and then the remaining balance would be four hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars.
Okay.
And then that balance will be divided for, you know, two hundred and sixty-five to two thousand six hundred.
Gets you the twenty-six eighty-five, which helps, which zeros off that.
Exactly.
Okay.
And then, and at the same time, you're gaining more customers, more people at your community, that will benefit the city for more taxes, more stuff, you know.
Right.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure everybody's clear, clear on it.
You're fine, sir, you're fine.
Don't want everybody getting involved and then say, oh, oh, it wasn't what I thought I was saying. Okay, good.
Jim, are you, have we confused you or we're back on track now?
I think we're right back where I started.
Okay, that's where I thought we were.
We kinda took a tangent there, but, but.
We went in a ditch for a minute.
Yeah. We're gonna, we're gonna collect two hundred thousand dollars, we're gonna put the two hundred thousand dollars to the past due specials. And then there will remain somewhere around four hundred and sixty, because the purchase price, excuse me, is equal to roughly the specials that are owed on the lots. And we're gonna use the money you're paying us with a chunk upfront to take care of the past due. The four sixty-one is going, as you build houses and pay on that, it will go towards the then, current year's taxes. So it's a wash, there's no expense to us. This was donated to us, there's no expenses, expense to us in doing this. It passes on to you, you build houses.
The, the.
There's new specials for new streets, which will be passed on to the buyers of these homes.
Exactly.
Right.
So I, I, I follow the bouncing ball now.
The benefit, the benefit really is to us, if we get the back specials cleared off at the end of the completion of the project. And then we also have all these new residents, we have new, new houses with property tax, mill levies associated to it.
Basically, I'm taking your headache away from you.
Yeah.
You know, instead of you wanna do a park on it, or you're gonna spend more money on it, I'm saving your money and giving you money out, more, to, to do this development.
Well, and I'm, I'm on your side, just because I wanted to make sure I understood it, but I, I like where it was going. I, I think I mentioned last time, it always scares me to be a developer, that's not what we wanna do. There's folks out there like you that do this for a living, and, and I like letting the, the market dictate this and not having us trying to control it. So, uh, you already answered my questions on where you were building, and it's a little bit about you. The only question I had left, and I just didn't get to this, and Jack, maybe you can shoot this off the top of your head, or at least relatively quickly, but of the two hundred thousand that goes back on the specials that could, and the taxes, there probably would be a piece of that coming back into our budget. Have we given any thought to that?
Danielle?
So the specials would be paid, if they're paid to us, uh, we let the county know that those specials were paid, and we use that to pay debt service.
But what about the real estate tax piece of it?
He owns the lot, he has to pay the property tax.
Yeah, for paying property, which, which in turn comes back to us.
Yeah, that's where, that's where I was going, so, okay, but there's no improvements on it, so the taxes aren't a significant number.
Probably ten dollars or something.
Yeah, they wouldn't be much.
I got it, I like it, and I appreciate you taking the time.
Thank you.
So I know, Jim, you were, you were pretty local last time about not being a developer, so this is one area where it gets us out of that.
I think there's times to do that. How we did it in the past, that, those were times to do it. It's just if we can avoid it going forward.
Night isn't over yet, Jim.
What's that?
Isn't over yet.
Well, we got through that chapter.
Jim, are you good?
I'm good, thank you.
Ben?
I agree with Jim very much, that it, it does get us a little nervous, it gets me a little nervous sometimes when the city gets into the, um, real estate side of things. I understand there is a time and place, but I would echo that. You said you started in two thousand and five, is that correct? And since two thousand and five, approximately, how many buildings, houses?
A lot.
A lot. The reason I ask is this, is because you survived through two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine, which was one of the worst housing markets, uh, there, that we've seen in a long time. Not only did you survive through that, but here you are, eight years, ten years later, uh, still building, still developing.
Yes.
Um, and to come and to be willing to accept the lots, or to put an offer in on these lots, and the condition that we're, we're dealing with with the back tax, the specials and everything, uh, tells me that you see something as far as development, uh, for this area. And you have experience, having dealt, worked through some of these hard times. So, um, to me, that seems like, we have the two hundred thousand dollars as a gesture of good faith, as far as the down payment that goes along with that. That coupled with the fact that over time, we're gonna recoup our costs, we're not gonna be in the real estate market, uh, there, uh, I would be very supportive, uh, of this here, just based upon what you presented, and also looking at some of the, I, I've been looking through your company while I've been, while you've been talking to.
The reason we survived the economy, our methods we're taking and our bill job is completely different than anybody else, you know? Our prices, our quality speak up for itself, you know? Yes, I don't advertise too much in my company, but I'm, we are very busy. We know when we put ourselves in, in a project, we'll start from A to Z, we'll finish it up, me and my son, no problems, everybody will be happy. You trust me, you will be happy.
Now, do you usually, as far as the real estate side of this, again, has no bearing really, just because, but do you usually have, do you, are you all the real estate agents as well, or do you?
I do have my, my real estate, but I share that with other people, because it's better to have more than one company. Mostly, we deal with Kill and Williams, they have the highest people, they have two hundred fifty real estate on their side, you know?
Okay, that's good, no, but yeah, I would be very supportive of this.
Yeah, we do have our own real estate, but we don't use it much, you know?
I do have one question for you, just.
Yes, sir.
Is just, would this be set up as an HOA, or would this be just a neighborhood with covenants? What?
We can do either way.
What do you prefer in your business model?
I'd prefer HOA, be less headache for us, and then less headache for everybody, and then it will have rules, certain rules, because people without rules, they don't, they get lost. You know, that's why we set it to HOA, it'd be better.
Okay. Tom?
I was gonna say, I understand at our last meeting and the discussion we had with the park and stuff like that, what I was struggling with was the significant amount of risk we were gonna go into trying to sell fourteen, fifteen lots, and the amount of debt that was gonna have to be recovered, and I didn't see that being potentially real successful. I appreciate this gentleman coming in and talking tonight about what he wants to do up there. He's doing it more in tune with what's on the west side of that property, south of Sixty-Ninth Street, and just gonna continue it on the hillside, and so I, I support this. But I also support the mayor looking for, for, uh, parkland, and that's something we ought to pursue in the future. And working more on our terms, instead of what, for what we wanna do versus what we have to do. So.
Okay, Brandy?
Um, I just echo everybody else's comments, and I'm gonna be supportive of this. Um, I like the idea of having a hundred and seventy-two new residents up there versus maybe sixteen. So I like trying to expand the community more. Um, you said on Webb Road was where your latest development was, what did you say that development name was?
Rowan State. Rowan.
Rowan.
It's a weird name, that's my daughter, she passed away, I put that state on her name.
And it's, where is it at, on Webb Road?
On Webb Road, between Forty-Fifth and Forty-Second Street. Twenty-nine homes we built there. We started last December, December, and we finished in December.
Okay. Okay. That's all I had, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Ben?
I was gonna go ahead and make a motion that we accept the proposal by Elite USA LLC Construction for purchasing portion of high-rise property, uh, that the city owns with the two hundred thousand dollar, uh, down payment and the purchase prices as mentioned before.
Okay. George?
I'll second that.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. I just, a couple of things, I, I still feel like I wanna address or look at, and I kinda wanna come back to something George said, when we were dealing with another builder that we didn't know. Yeah, I'm still, specifically on the first set of thirty, would like the council to consider a higher letter of credit, at least the first time. You know, and, and that's not something we're looking at tonight, because we haven't got to the point where we're doing infrastructure, but I think it's something that we should talk about, and the council agrees, we should make sure you're aware of kinda what we're looking for. And honestly, if we ask for a letter of credit and you don't have any issues, it's never gonna impact you. But I think for us, just to protect ourselves, going in something where we're gonna set up for thirty houses, probably the first time we do ask for a little higher letter of credit than the thirty-five percent that we normally do.
How much? Forty-five?
Forty-five, fifty, somewhere in there.
Forty-five is good.
Okay. I just wanna make sure that if we did something like that, you were aware and you, you feel good.
Yeah.
Jack?
Um, something would help him out is, it, it, let's say we, we make it fifty percent. Right now, to release a letter of credit, it's based on occupancy permit. So we can say to this gentleman, okay, you put, for every basement you put in, uh, let's say there's thirty-six basements, I don't wanna do the math, but for every basement you put into the ground, we'll reduce that fifty and work it closer to the thirty-five, even though you haven't got your occupancy permit. Because, see, that shows he's got investment in the ground.
Right.
It, it reduces his letter of credit faster that way, uh, then, uh, then it'll get down to thirty-five, and it'll stay that way until he gets occupancy on thirty-five percent of the thirty-six houses.
And once again, we can talk about that later, it's a side issue. I just wanna make sure, if we went with a, a higher letter of credit the first time, you were okay with it, which seems that you are, so.
Otherwise, honestly, I, I just finished to develop, a new development on Samile, I paid the whole specials, the same thing we did. I like to pay my own specials upfront, it's less where it costs, but my budget, it doesn't allow me, because I'm, you know? I don't wanna spend thin in my budget, you know? But, uh, I don't mind doing forty-five percent.
And, and the other thing too, I wouldn't mind seeing, before we get into that, like a first phase, is, um, maybe a copy of, uh, bylaws or setup of an HOA, and what that might look like, and then the home requirements, I think would be the need, need to look at before we start. Tom?
I was gonna delete it, but, uh, when he comes back and talks to us, would you bring some pictures of your houses that you've got out, so that the council can see what you're doing?
You can see us on EliteUSALLC.net.
Okay.
If you went to our website, you see some of the houses we build.
Okay.
Okay.
I like to be involved on the beds, on the, to save the community and save people money, because the way I do it is different, and, you know, that's the way I, I find out how much different money between the specials, the city assists and the specials I do, it's about big yet.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you for bringing this to us, and, and I'm glad the council got to get to have some good and healthy discussion. We got.
We gotta determine, uh, he's gonna present, you're gonna, once we get this worked out, we gotta have a contract, so.
Yeah, so right now, the council's approving, entering into agreement. We'll get a contract, and we'll have to bring that back to the council.
Who's gonna, what I'm asking, who's gonna prepare the contract? His relative, or?
I think we have you do it, and that would be typical, and we have Doug look it over and go from there.
No problem.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, we got a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
And that motion passes seven one. Thank you very much, and I appreciate you showing up this evening. The next item on the agenda is item G, which is consider approving a statement of assurance for Wampo Grant at Sixty-first Street and Broadway intersection to the Wichita Valley Center Flood Control. Jack?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, uh, I'm getting ready to send in an application, uh, for the section of road to get an eighty percent grant. We'd have to pay twenty. Uh, this was high on, on your, on your goals list. Might add, uh, I just found this out, uh, and I don't know why they're going back, but they also want one of these for, um, for the, for the Chisholm Creek, Sixty-first Street Bridge. It's like you're starting the whole project over again. I don't know why she's, they're asking for this, but, uh, could we include that into this, because I have to submit the grant quickly, and we'd have to have a special meeting just to do assurance for the bridge, too. If you don't mind, just throwing that in in the motion. You've already done this once, but they're making me, for some reason, do it again, and I have no idea why, so.
Maybe Tom can share. Tom?
I would like to. Uh, what they're finding out is a lot of the proposals that are in the five-year plan have been coming in significantly less than they were proposed, and so they're asking for people to clean up their proposals and resubmit them. It's also an opportunity, if anything got missed, to update it, so, uh, it's been our best benefit to do that, that's why they're doing it, so.
Yeah. Well, okay. But anyway, I'd like to, if you don't mind, throwing, throwing Sixty-first Street Bridge in there, too, in your motion.
I, I, I'll make a motion, we approve, uh, this recommendation for, uh, West Broad, or West Sixty-first Street.
And the bridge, please.
And the bridge, yes. I'm sorry, I was trying to find the note on here.
Okay. George, are you it? George, did you light up, or is that an accident? I had you for a split second, and you went away.
I was gonna second it.
Okay. Okay. So we got a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes eight zero. That brings us to item H, which is consider accepting more land, sixteen lots, and High Ridge Second Edition from Sixty-Ninth Street to Hydralic. Jack?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You might be interested in these sixteen. Okay, up on your screen, um, to your left is Hydralic. This is west of the land we just got through talking about. They have sixteen lots over there, right off of Hydralic, that they would like to give us. Uh, these lots, if you take all the specials, an average amount over the sixteen lots is, have about nine thousand some odd dollars per lot specials. They would like to, uh, give us this property. They're at a point of it going to a tax sale. I am concerned if it goes to a tax sale, some people unknowingly will buy individual lots, then they find out there's nine thousand specials, and guess what? They won't pay them, and we'll be back buying them again. So, uh, this is being offered to us, we, we forego any of the auction charges and whatever, uh, by taking it on. We've done this four other times, uh, but it's here for a year consideration. Uh, now, Mr. Russell, uh, who's part of the corporation that's gonna give us this land, says he has a builder that would give us a thousand dollars, if we do this, and we equalize the specials, or run them out for twenty years, which I don't think is feasible, uh, then he has several builders that would be willing to buy the lots for a thousand dollars each, but that does not clear the specials, which kinda concerns me. The specials will stay there, plus they'd have another fifteen, sixteen, or seventeen thousand dollars worth of specials tacked onto that to finish out that project. But that's kind of where we're at.
So, so Doug, we, we could accept this and then go ahead and land bank it, right?
Yes, in fact, if you're, if you're talking about manipulating the specials in any way, that's the only way you could do it, that's correct.
Okay. So, Ben?
What number are we on that we've been given land from this developer?
A hundred and seventy-two, well, it, it depends. We, we actually made money on the hundred acres he gave us off of Broadway. Um, but on, on this development, the hundred and seventy-two lots, which is part of this[1707.76] of this development, but it's on the east side of Grove, and then these 16 lots.
So, three times, including the Broadway?
Yeah.
Side?
The Broadway helped to pay for this building, by the way.
Sure, sure. And, well, and that's, you know, making money or not making money, I, I think there's a problem with their business strategy, apparently, that's not being very helpful to us when they pass the buck on to us to fix these or take on these specials. Um, now, Mr. Mayor, would this be something that we could look at? Um, for parkland? It's not the size of that?
It's in an, it's in an HOA.
Okay.
Um, so no, this would not be something that we could use. Um, and we'd have, then we would truly own the specials on that if we did something like that too. Um, but the land bank is a way to punt that and we can respread the specials. Um, as you can see, we're, we're getting ready to sell land that we already have in the land bank. So, this would not be a bad option for us to go ahead and take it at 16 lots. I'm sure we could, uh, uh, get those unloaded at a later date.
You know, um, the, uh, even if we, we sold them for what the, what the specials are, we should easily be able to do that. I guarantee you those builders out there will, will pay $9,000 a lot. They'll make money on the lot.
And it's not necessarily that we wouldn't make money off of it, it just seems like a bad business practice that we're, a bad cycle that we're in right now.
We're, we're not in it for the money.
No.
We're in it to, to save every taxpayer in the city of Park City, having to continue paying those specials.
And, and there's part of that that's true, but once again, this comes back to why we went out and we purchased those land that, that landed at county auctions the last time because what Jack said is absolutely true. Somebody comes in, buys this property and then they don't pay on it for another four years and we're sitting out. This keeps us, you know, from Jack and I going to an auction, trying to get in, get the winning bid so we can purchase it. So, it does help us offset for something that we know is going to go to the county auction. And with the land bank that we set up, it allows us, where we're not having to make payments on that, on those specials, it, it's made a convenient way for us to take land like this and put it aside.
And I guess to clarify, I'm not saying that it's the city's bad business practice.
Right.
I'm talking about the development and the developer as a whole, not our, not our.
Absolutely.
So, please understand, I'm not saying that, I'm not turning the council on the bus, I'm simply saying-
We need more guys like this guy.
I would, I would definitely agree, but I, I'm not opposed to it. I'm just, I, it, it seems very, uh, problematic that we're kind of finding ourselves in this position a few different times now with the same developer.
Yeah.
That's just my comment.
See, the bigger lots-
We've almost eliminated that.
See, the bigger lots are, are, got like 11,000, that's the one south of the road. The ones on the north side are more, uh, in, in the nine or 10, so we put it in land bank and we'd equalize all the lots to the same, same special. It makes life a little simpler, so.
Okay. Are you good, Ben?
Yes, sir.
John?
I guess I, I understand the developments are a different, came through, came to us through a different way, but the land on Broadway was not a failed development. It was actually a donation for parks. Um, and then he graciously allowed us to sell it, uh, and we made money on that. It, it was not a failed business or anything. So, I just, just want to point that out for, for history on the city, that it wasn't really a bad strategy on our part. We, we took a, a gift.
Honestly, none of it's been a bad deal for us. I mean, we've been able to sell their lot, Saddle Brook. We sat on that stuff for a long time, but we were building houses and we're kind of back in the driver's seat again.
How many acres Jack was on Broadway there behind Leakers?
Hundred, hundred acres.
Hundred acre was donated to us and I mean, I understand it was in the flood plain when it was donated to us, which was part of the reason that it was to be turned into parks and we made lemonade out of it.
Okay. Jim?
Uh, is this the last of the lots in that development?
Uh-
I think there's a few.
There might be one or, there's less than probably four.
So, we're off on the road about that, okay.
Yeah, it's not, uh, the, the ones with like four left, they're owned by a different owner, not this corporation.
Okay. That's great. Well, this isn't a very big transaction here. This is just really a handful of lots compared to some of the other things we've looked at, so. And it, what John says is correct, it's worked out in the past where I say I don't like to develop, I don't mind stepping in and controlling things until we get it in the hands of developer and that's what we're talking about here, so. Kind of want to state my thoughts on it.
Okay. Tom?
I'd like to say I'm disappointed with the developer, but I, I don't need to go there. Uh, this makes sense for us to do this. We do know going into this that there's some debt on it. Uh, if we don't do this and we go to buy it, we have to pay for it and then we get the same thing. Uh, it just makes sense to go ahead and accept it and then try to deal with it. So, I'm going to make a motion that we approve, uh, accepting the 16 lots in Hyridge Second Edition from 69th Street to Hydraulic.
And dump that in the land bank.
And, yes, put, and put it in Park City Land Bank.
Okay. Ben?
Sure, I'll second that.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes eight, zero. That brings us to item I, which is consider the purchase of a 2018 Ford Fusion for the administration in the amount of $17,815 to be paid out of the 2018 capital, budget capital equipment fund. Danielle?
Mayor and council, um, I am here to present item I to you. Um, we are asking for your consideration in purchasing a new vehicle for the administration department. Uh, the vehicle we currently own is a 2005 Ford Taurus. Uh, this Ford Taurus has been good to us. Um, we've had this vehicle, um, the administration department has had it, I believe, for five years. I'm not sure when the police department, uh, purchased it, but it did come from the police department. Uh, before it was transferred to administration, I have been told that we've had some maintenance issues with it. Um, like I said, it's been good to us. It's reaching 100,000 miles and our maintenance department has recommended it's time to, uh, get a new vehicle. So, um, keeping it any longer may require, uh, spending additional monies on maintenance. Currently, we use this vehicle for, um, out of town training for staff. Uh, I know council members at times use this, this vehicle. Um, we also use it for off-site meetings and the accounting department uses this vehicle on a daily basis to make the bank deposits. Uh, we've priced several vehicles, um, and we attached a quote of the lowest bid we received in your agenda packet. That would be for a, uh, 2018 Ford Fusion, um, which includes, um, power locks, power windows, uh, pretty basic, nothing fancy, but, uh, the total brand-new car would be $17,815. The city would pay for this vehicle out of the capital equipment fund. Administration departments with general fund departments, um, other than the police department and code enforcement, have placed monies aside in the capital equipment fund over the past several years to make a capital purchase. Uh, we haven't had to make many capital purchases out of CEF for the administration department, so that money has been accrued, been accruing. And we currently have approximately $20,000, um, that would, um, that we could use. Um, uh, this is, this vehicle would be purchased on the state of Kansas Ford contract. Um, thank you, chief, for giving us that contact. Um, that was a great price we received on that Ford Fusion. Um, and that's all I have. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
One thing I'd like to add is just, um, on the administration side, it's always been a hand-me-down vehicle that we've swapped around and run and then certain people don't like driving it and, and, and this car has massive issues, um, and really needs to be expired. And, you know, we started talking about the Ford Fusion, um, and first I was thinking we should look for a used one, try to see what we could find. Um, but then when we got the information from the chief and we got the price, kind of where we're at, this gets us in a, in a, in a, you know, a basic vehicle that's going to get good fuel economy, that staff is not going to be concerned about taking out of town, uh, because most of them don't like driving the current car we have and would rather drive their own because they don't feel confident in the, the vehicle that we have now, other than local. And, and from what I understand, on, on the highway, it can get pretty scary when you hit 70 in it, so. Tom?
I drove the car and after they balanced the tires, it drove fine. Above, you know, at 70. Uh, but anyway, we took it to the last leave meeting and it ran fine. Uh, my question is, and I've asked before, it's got cruise control too, because you didn't have the options on the sheet, and I know the police department used to buy cars that didn't have cruise control and ask why.
Yes, it does. Yes, it does.
Because then people go out of town and there's no cruise control.
We made sure it had cruise control.
Okay.
Yeah.
And did, did you look local at all?
Um, no, I did not.
Okay.
And simply because we knew the Ford contract, we couldn't get it cheaper?
I know, but I didn't know if we gave them an opportunity.
Yeah. George?
Well, I'll make a motion that we approve the purchase of a 2018 Ford Fusion for administration in the amount of $17,815 to be paid out of the 2018 budget capital and equipment fund.
Hey, Ben, did you want a second?
Yes, I'd like to second. Just had one question here. I know we're going to get to it in the second, in this next, uh, motion, or next, uh, item agenda, agenda item. With the selling of the one, when we sell that, would we be able to put the money back into the capital equipment fund? Would that be?
And that's what our next item is, is to discuss, but only after we-
Sure.
Figure out what we got here. Okay. We got a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes eight, zero. That brings us to our next item, which is considered the sale of the current administration vehicle on Purple Wave. So, one of the things I talked to Danielle about, and the chief has been very successful with Purple Wave, and then also putting those funds back into that capital improvement fund, that, you know, I talked to Danielle, that I would recommend we do the same thing with this vehicle. We put it on Purple Wave, we sell it and then we use to replenish, um, the funds that we used to purchase the other vehicle.
Correct. And, and budget practice is that we get council approval before we make that transfer. Those monies, uh, are required to be deposited into general fund and then a transfer out, uh, that would replenish CEF monies, uh, for future capital purchases, so.
Okay. George?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the sale of, of the current vehicle, uh, on Purple Wave.
And that those funds go back into the-
Right.
CEF.
CEF.
Ben?
Second.
Okay. Got a motion and a second. Not seeing any further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes eight, zero.
Thank you.
Thanks, Danielle. Appreciate it. Um, TJ, I want to thank you for coming. I mean, it was, it, it was good to see when somebody's interested in making a purchase, I don't just throw the proposal out and then never show up to see him in person. Uh, for me, it made a big difference and I appreciate you coming this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim?
I have nothing further to add.
Brandy?
Nothing.
George?
I don't have anything.
Tom?
I don't have anything.
Elvis?
I'm good.
I do have a couple things. Um, number one, um, this Saturday, it's, uh, National Prescription Drug Takeback Day, um, and the state of Kansas is participating. It's from, it's on this Saturday from 10:00 AM, uh, to 2:00 PM. The closest location that we can take back any expired prescription drugs to is the Bel Air, uh, City Hall, and, uh, you can go to ag.kas.gov and find locations near you, but if you have expired prescription drugs, uh, that you like to dispose of safely, that is an option that is available, uh, here to our citizens. Um, then on May the 12th, uh, I'll be hosting my May convos over coffee and it'll be good to have with us Chief Boston, uh, Boston that day, uh, so I want to invite everyone out to, um, the Daylight Donuts, 9 o'clock to 10, uh, on May the 12th. Um, and this last one, more of a personal issue. Um, I do want to say thank you very much to our city, uh, administration, our council, our staff, employees. Uh, last week, um, after a very brief battle with leukemia, my sister passed away and, um, she was one of my biggest supporters and had been for a long time. And in fact, um, she posted this and someone had brought this to my attention. Uh, she said, "I'm so proud of my brother Benjamin. She, he won the city council in Park City. I know that he will be the best man for the job. He had a great opponent who was so supportive as well. It's amazing how things worked out. I've never been more happy for him besides him marrying his beautiful wife, Melissa." And, uh, so while I miss my sister very much, I am very thankful for the love and support that I've received, uh, from several of you, from our city, uh, and from friends and family. And, uh, I do miss her, but I am thankful that she was always such a support to me.
George?
Also, uh, my condolences go out to Ben and his family, the loss of his sister. Uh, I know that's heartfelt times, uh, just part of life, uh, things that we face. So, uh, Ben, I'll continue to pray for you and your family. Uh, that's all I have.
John?
I would echo that and I have nothing. I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
Jim?
I'd second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion passes eight, zero. Thank you.